Okay, welcome everybody. I would like to call the Monday, June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, Blue Springs Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tracy, can I get a roll call, please?
Of course. Commissioner Stokkenberry?
Present.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Sanderson? Commissioner Graham?
Present.
Commissioner Pradoff?
Here.
Commissioner Howe?
Here.
Commissioner Ingersoll?
Here.
Commissioner Humphrey?
Present.
Chairperson Hennig?
Present. Thank you, Tracy. Thank you and welcome everyone here and watching this meeting from home. Tonight's agenda consists of the minutes from the last meeting on June twenty-third and rezoning for Rampage Athletics. And then we're gonna hear a couple of community development monthly reports. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda for the approval of the June twenty-third meeting that was in your packet.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Next up, I will open the public hearing for Agenda Item Number Two, RZ zero-six-two-five-nine-five-zero-four for Rampage Athletic. I will open, I will ask for city exhibits. Let me rephrase that. I will ask for exhibits from our city council, city attorney.
I would love to. I'd like to enter into the record Exhibits one through eight, which are listed on the agenda.
Thank you. All of those that are present and would like to speak in favor of or against or about this matter, please rise and be sworn in as a group. That'll include you.
I do.
Thank you. I understand that Ms. Frye is ready for her presentation.
Yes, so Chantel Frye, Associate Planner, nine oh three West Main Street, Blue Springs. Believe the zip code is six-four-zero-one-five-four, one-four. So before you this evening, we have a request for a rezoning of the property located at two thousand and one Southwest Ninth Street. This current property includes one parcel that is approximately one point seven-four acres and is currently zoned MF fourteen, which is the moderate density for multifamily district. The request this evening comes from the applicant, Michael Scott, on behalf of the property owner, the Saint Peters Methodist Church. And the request is to go from the MF fourteen, multifamily, to a general business. The current reset, the current request for a rezoning is to align the property zoning with its intended use and the surrounding zoning patterns. And at this point of the application and process, there are no site modifications, no new construction, or additional planning applications are being considered as part of this request. It's strictly a rezoning from the MF fourteen to the general business. So the two thousand and fourteen comprehensive plan includes the subject property as a neighborhoods, which is defined as areas for residential living arranged in a connected patterns of streets and blocks to provide access to civic and neighborhood amenities. The comp plan also states that this area is designated as a neighborhood, should have connections to gathering places, to neighborhood centers, and to meet for daily needs. The intent of the rezoning to the general business would allow a range of permitted uses which could serve the surrounding neighborhood. Approval of the rezoning application would allow additional land uses on the site, such as Rampage Athletics, which is currently what this rezoning is for. So if the rezoning application is denied, Rampage Athletics would not be permitted to operate at this location. And the current zoning MF fourteen does not allow conditional use permit for the use of the Rampage Athletics as an indoor recreational to operate. The request zoning is justified such as the property was originally designated as a general business when it was zoned in the nineteen nineties. The proposed zoning would restore this site to its original zoning classification, aligning with the historical use and the intent while supporting the continued development of a neighborhood serving commercial uses at this location. Staff has reviewed the rezoning request under the nine review criteria in the staff report. And as such, staff recommends approval of the rezoning application. The applicant is present and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff before we hear from the applicant? And as a side note, I did not hit the gavel to formally open the public hearing, but just as a note, we are currently in the public hearing for this. Any questions for Ms. Frye?
Chair.
Yes.
I'm just curious why we, it was general business and then it went MF fourteen and now we're going back to general business? Why the, was there a project that was coming up and didn't happen?
I believe it was originally part of, I think that is, is that Eagles? I wanna say Eagles Creek? I forget exactly the subdivision, but it was originally all this lot was for that multifamily, which you see here. But this section was lauded off and they resold it. And so at that point, they left it as MF fourteen. I don't know exactly, I'd have to go back in the archives to really look at why it went from general business to MF fourteen and then why hasn't it ever gone back? Probably because no one's ever asked.
Okay. Isn't that a church that's right there?
Yes, it is. It currently is a church.
And a church can operate in MF fourteen?
Typically, churches are zoned in SF seven or in general business. So it is not a permitted use for say, under MF fourteen.
I might need an updated manual then, because the one I have says it is.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay, I will double check for sure to make sure.
Which my manual's old, so. I was looking at permitted uses and what would change if it went MF fourteen to general business to see what we'd be allowing in that area when it went general business.
I do know, going to general business, as I spoke about it earlier, depending on what use would come into a general business, there still would be, some uses would need a conditional use permit, even though it would be general business.
Correct, some would, but then there were still some that were popping up and I would question, is that a good location for some of those other uses that would be allowed under a general business? It's kind of the issue I'm having with this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff before we hear from the applicant? Seeing none? Would the applicant like to speak?
Sure.
My name is Michael Scott and I am the pastor at Saint Peter United Methodist Church. We're known as The Table. And we bought this property about three years ago and we have partnered with Rampage and there's a gym in there. And they would like to use, use that gym to do stuff in the evenings with kids and that aligns with our mission and what we do. And so they went to get their business permit and we're told it wasn't zoned properly and we did not know that. So we are trying to do the right thing and get it rezoned to the proper zoning so that we can operate as necessary.
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions?
Just one. Are they, will they be, will you still maintain ownership or will they be?
Oh, no, we're, yeah, we're owners. They're just using it like three hours in the evening.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Seeing other questions up here, I will ask, thank you. Ask if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this project. Please state your full name and address and you've been sworn in. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Sherry Frost and I live eight twenty-one Southwest Granite Lane. And if you're looking at the map where it says Southwest Granite Lane, if you go directly up and then over to kind of the end where that wedge area is, like directly behind the property, that's where I live. So I am extremely concerned about it being changed, like rezoned for a business. It's a little bit hard to tell, but the church property is like directly in my backyard. Like there's not, I have like a patio and a little backyard area and then the church is right there. You know, I'm concerned about it being a business. You know, I know I kinda looked up to see what they were wanting to change it to. You know, that's gonna be a lot of little kids perhaps running around outside. It's gonna be a lot more traffic coming in and out. I'm also really worried about the fact that, you know, should this not work out, if once it's zoned for a business, other things could move in there that would be maybe less ideal than the business that's there right now or trying to be there right now.
Thank you. Just for clarification purposes, are you speaking in favor of or against it?
Against.
Okay, this was in favor of section?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I wanted to make sure and clarify for the record publicly and also for us that you're speaking against it.
I'm sorry, I thought you said either way.
It's very, it's very fine. We appreciate you coming to speak. Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this project? Seeing none, is there anybody that would like to speak against this project and opposition to this project?
My name is Bob Frost. I live at eighty-six nineteen South Seventh Highway in Blue Springs. I'm a contractor and builder. I have built around Blue Springs for about fifty years now. I built the house that my daughter lives in along with several other houses in that neighborhood several years ago. When we bought the lots over there from Shroud's Farm, we intended for those to be for a single family and that church was behind that and churches are good neighbors. They, they don't stay up late at night, they don't have parties in the yard, they don't play their stereos too loud. But now this is, could change and this really concerns me that we have that coming up. The general business covers such a wide array of anything you wanna do just about in business. You can run it at twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, which is not a good neighbor. And once they change that from a church back to general business, to get the church, you have to have a special use permit if I, I think that's right. But any other general business, you can go in as long as you meet the basic requirements of the health and safety. You have screening from around your neighbors that are lesser zoned. You get that taken care of, watch your water runoff, which may or may not be there right now. And it, it's just not a good fit to go ahead and change that back to GB without having some kind of a catch or a safety net underneath of it. This, the group with the bouncer, whatever it is, they're a fine group, I'm sure they are. They're gonna do a good job, but a lot of businesses fail. Sometimes they last a year, sometimes they last five years. But there's not many businesses that have been around for forty or fifty years and we're looking for a lifetime thing. This is a lifetime change and that's what concerns me about the whole thing. Once the group with the athletics, if they change their mind, move someplace else, anything can go in there. We have no safety net to keep that from happening. That's a concern I have for the customers that I dealt with. When I sold them houses, I said, well, we have a church here, you got a good quiet neighbor, good neighbor. So you know, I just, it just doesn't seem like the right thing to do where it's at right now when they can go a few blocks away to Seventh Highway and do anything they wanna do. If anybody has a question, I'd be happy to answer it.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to this project? I will close the public comment section of this hearing. It is over. Any further discussion from the staff?
Yes, so to answer Commissioner Graham's question, the assistant director and I looked at the use table for assembly and depending on assembly size, of course, with the MF fourteen, if they're, what is it? Under, under five hundred people for the assembly, it would have to be rezoned to a PD. But if they were an assembly of five hundred or more, it would have to be rezoned to general business 'cause they would not be able to operate under MF fourteen.
Thank you for that clarification. Anything else from the staff?
I have nothing.
Okay. Anything else from the applicant you'd like to add based upon what you've heard? Good?
Okay.
Any discussions from us up here?
I have a question for staff. Is it a part of the city's comprehensive plan to have general business in that area?
General business allows for the mixed use in the neighborhood centers. So that would allow that for, to be general business. So it's pretty much an open thing for the general business to be there.
Chair.
Yes.
It's my understanding that the church is gonna remain there though. Is that correct? So it's probably the primary business is gonna be a church?
Yes, as what, as far as what city staff is tracking, that it will be remained as a church and the church is looking to be able to expand to add like the Rampage Athletics in order to help pay for utilities and bills.
Inside the very building that's already there?
Yes.
They're not building expanding?
No.
Thank you.
I think my concern is, and not gonna say this happened, look at future, we bring it to general business, the church sells it to Kohl's, for instance, they build a distribution center there. There's nothing we can do about it. I would like to see if we changed and if we allowed it, to say if ownership changes, it defaults back to MF fourteen. I don't know if that's possible, but.
That's a good point.
I believe you.
That is my concern and nothing against the church, just if something should happen.
Well, a question I would have in line with that or in addition to that is, if the church sells the building and somebody wants to go in and do a distribution center or a bar or retail place, the next owner, won't they have to come back and get approval for what they wanna put in there?
Yeah, but we can't deny a bar if they, if they meet all the permits and requirements.
But a bar won't.
A bar wouldn't technically go there because of the residential being right there.
Well, let's say a machine shop. If it's general business, a machine shop would be there.
A machine shop would still need a conditional use permit because that's considered a light industrial.
Okay. So other examples of businesses, there's plenty out there that, that might wanna go there should the current owner sell. And again, to, to ask the question again, would still the next owner and business would have to come back through to approve the use of the fast food restaurant that wants, that wants to go in there or the embroidery center or, or whatever?
So typically, yes, so depending on the use, like a lot of our fast food, like small sliders, they had to go underneath the PD because they couldn't meet the setbacks, drive-through, things like of that nature. If it was an embroidery shop, that would be allowed outright. But that's also very, they would still have to still meet with us no matter what to make sure they meet the parking requirements and everything of that nature. So it.
But if they meet all the parking or all the requirements, no one has any say on what could go there. If they meet, you know, the park requirements, EDA, there's setback, the whole nine yards 'cause it's general business. That would be my concern, is that any business could go there should the church sell. And we've seen this in Blue Springs before. Somewhere sells and then something goes there that really no one really wanted to see. But no one has any control over that.
Right. I think I'm tracking where you're going. I have hesitation and concern when you say any business can go there because if somebody else buys it, any business cannot go there.
Okay, any business that would qualify under a general business.
It's a permitted use.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because unless it's, it's a permitted use, it wouldn't have to come before us. Just something that would require a conditional use permit would come before us.
I have a question, probably for the staff. Or remind me, jog my memory, are all churches under general business?
No, not all of them.
Let's say this was zoned, how are, how are churches in Blue Springs normally zoned?
They typically are zoned either a general business or SF seven.
So the SF seven?
It's single family.
Yeah. So could we eliminate the concern if we put this under an SF seven?
Then they would not be allowed to have Rampage Athletics.
So that eliminates that, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
But what is possible, I think from what I heard earlier, is your idea that if it changes ownership, then it automatically reverts back. Is that a possibility and has that been done?
Jennifer, would that be allowed at as a condition with the rezoning?
I believe we can put reasonable restrictions on there with regards to the rezoning. I'm trying to think as far as how do we track that? You know, it's, it's a good condition, but then how do we necessarily track that? Because a lot of times it's at a sight out of mind. Nobody intends to, you know, that they got a deal, they sell the property and then all of a sudden, we've got a new use in there that didn't come back to us, then what do we do? So trying to think through those things. So that would be my concern is, is okay, how do we track that one?
So technically, this property is labeled wrong as it is right now, correct? So it technically needs to be labeled either GB or SF seven, right?
No, it would, if you did SF seven, then it would rule out the use of what's being currently used. If you did GB, the other thing would be a PD under the rezoning and that would bring it up to code.
And PD though, would not allow what they're thinking about doing?
Uh, PD, they would have to stipulate everything they would want underneath that.
See, I don't have a problem with Rampage Athletics. My problem is twenty years down the road, if this property sells. But that's, that's my concern.
But I think you just answered something, unless I'm misunderstanding you. If you label this a PD and you get it under that zoning, then there is a requirement on the church to satisfy some requirements. They can satisfy those requirements and he can still have what he has and it doesn't go under general business. Did I misunderstand that or is that what you just said?
There's, I would have to look into it to see if underneath that PD, if he would be able to add those uses to make sure.
Right.
I can't answer that off the fly right now.
I think that that's what we could look in, but because if that can happen, then that solves what everybody's discussing here tonight. And I don't, I don't think I could rule on it yet until I would know that.
Right now, as I, as the staff report, as I said, it, it meets the criteria of the nine review that we, we reviewed under. So it would be up to the commissioners and the chair to make the decision.
And that's my, and that's kind of my point here is, we move it to PD, it's still me. Church sells, sells it to a quilt shop. Quilt shop doesn't have to come to us for any permits. They can just get their business license, open up and all of a sudden you have semis going in and out of this residential neighborhood, bringing in shipments because we zoned it as general business.
Shipments of that nature wouldn't reach underneath general business. It would require a conditional use permit.
There's a lot of places in Blue Springs that need a conditional use permit, but they, they don't use them, so.
Again, that would be something that would have to come back to staff for review.
Yeah, I don't know. I just, we, we just have, we.
But you, your concern is not the PD, it's the general business.
Yeah, it is, but even the.
So can we not as a, can we not say, can we not ask the city to look back into the PD and see what the requirements are and see if that can satisfy that? Is that not something that can be done?
Like, is that something we can do?
Is our say final on this or is this going to city council?
It's going to city council.
Regardless if it's going to council or not, one option is if there's concern, is to table this until the next meeting to give more time for further clarification on all of this. I'm not certain, but in fairness to any applicant that comes before us, I think there's a level of fairness that we owe to them to, if there's too many questions or uncertainty, to table it versus a denial. A denial all around just has a negative connotation to it. Being that the council has final say, they can override us, but, but still for the record, it would be a denial. So I'd like to just throw that out there, that that is an option that we could take instead of voting on this.
And first, I don't wanna deny Rampage Athletics.
Right, I understand that. You made that clear.
And as the attorney spoke, she said that, you know, how can we keep up with that? And that's not fair to the next person who would come in to try to buy. And then we say, wait, 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 we said this, what, what do you mean you said that?
Yeah.
And so there has to be a clear record of that. And I understand what you're saying there. So I would, I would make a motion if we need a motion to table it, but I don't know that we need the motion to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
We do need a motion if that's what you wish to do.
Some sort, or if nobody makes a motion, then it's just dead. So I think a motion to.
Okay, okay.
When we get there, a motion to table would be in, in, in place if that's a commissioner's request. Any thoughts down here? Any wise wisdoms down here?
Yes, sir.
Is it, is it fair to this business to be denied, even if they meet the criteria for something that we think might happen in the future?
You've gotta think of the city's future vision.
I would love to answer that question. I think it's more of a hypothetical and an individual thought, you know, per commissioner. But I think that's, I think projects have been denied in the past, even though they meet criteria. Whether it's right or wrong, that's personal preference is the best way I can answer that. Commissioner Crowe?
Well, I guess I was looking at it from a legal aspect, maybe to turn my attention to the attorney. Get your thought on that.
Could you repeat what your question is? I apologize.
Would it be, is it fair to this business to be denied if they meet the criteria for something that we believe might happen in the future?
So keep in mind, this is a recommending body. So whether you recommend approval or not, I mean, this actually is ultimately decided by the city council. You know, with that said, that you have lots of things to consider when you're trying to determine, do we recommend approval, do we recommend denial? And so, you know, looking at future, you know, the future use and what this rezoning would mean for this property, I think is a proper, that is proper to look at. So I don't think I quite answered your question, but what I'm saying is, is that I think if, I, this is not a situation where it, because if they meet the criteria, it's like a check the box and therefore they get the permit to operate. That's not what we have here. Our rezoning is more of a legislative decision, which means there's a lot more deference to considerations and, and what you're considering. So it's not the same thing as, let's say, a plat. With a plat, if they meet the criteria of the regulations, you have little deference to deny a plat. Since this is a rezoning, you have a lot more to consider. And so, so no, there's no requirement that you approve it if, just because you feel like they meet that criteria.
I understand.
Okay, all right.
So staff, are there, were there any letters of opposition?
There was not.
And Chair, I would just like to say that, to your point, Byron, this is, I think this is an excellent discussion of what a board that, of what we are here for. We are trying to look into the future to say, hey, what, what is best for Blue Springs? And if there's another way to put this business, list this business differently that would actually be better for us in the future, I think that's absolutely what we are here to do.
Well, I concur with you, but I, and I also agree with you that maybe you could table it and we can come back to this discussion.
Yep.
Any other discussion before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion? Anything from staff? All right. I will close the public hearing. And at this time, I would entertain a motion on this item.
Chair.
Yes.
I would move to table the rezoning of RZ zero-six-two-five-nine-six-zero-four for Rampage Athletics at this time.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Tracy, can you go call this, please?
Mr. Chairman, sorry.
Yep.
Sorry to interrupt, but are we talking about postpone to the next planning commission meeting? I'd like to have a date certain if at all possible, since this was a notice as a public hearing. Sorry to interrupt, but are we talking about postpone to the next planning commission meeting? I'd like to have a date certain if at all possible, since this was a notice as a public hearing.
Please amend your motion.
Yes, I'd like to amend the emotion to, uh, that we will. Take it back up in the next meeting, which is scheduled for July twenty, July twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
We have an amended motion and a second and, and, uh, get a roll call, please.
Yes. Commissioner Egersol.
Aye.
Commissioner Pumphrey.
Aye.
Commissioner Stokemberry.
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Graham.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
And Chairperson Hennig.
Aye.
All ayes.
That amended motion, uh, can, uh, passes? Thank you very much. And only thing left for tonight is hearing from Logan about our May and June community development report.
Well, unfortunately, Logan is not here, so you will have me.
About that time I looked out.
Let me get down to it. Okay. So kind of the highlights, um, chair and commissioners for the month of May. Um, total square footage and construction costs are down compared to last year. Um, single family home permits remain consistent when looking at it from year to date of last year. And, uh, code enforcement cases volume is on par from the previous year. Uh, Tim Horton's sign, uh, alternative sign. Plan was denied by city council on May fifth. And then we've nearly seen double the number of sign permits issued compared to this time last year for the month of May. And then for the month of June. Um, single family permits are down by fifty percent compared to the last June. Um, I will say there's, uh, back on the. Incline, we've seen a lot coming in because a lot of them got passed for final plaques and stuff, so now they're coming in. Uh, saw a significant drop in construction costs in comparison to June twenty twenty-four. There's a slight decrease in cases of code enforcement from last year. We had Hawes Estate, Espalty Surfaces and Eagles Ridge PRO were forwarded to city council on July seventh. And the downtown student mural project was approved on June twenty-third. And sign permits are relatively the same compared to last year. So the city is flowing and. Keep on moving. Any questions?
It's like good numbers. Any questions on that? All right. Thank you for that. If there's, uh, is there any other business from up here? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much and good evening.